I got it. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
As we wait for Commissioner Murdock to get his chair back.
No, I'm getting it raised back up. It goes up and down.
Yeah.
All right, we call the meeting to order. I'd like to make a note that this is a public meeting, although most of the people will be online, but we're still meeting in public. There has been some confusion in recent weeks. I would like to point out that the commissioners are required to meet in public, but not necessarily have a meeting with the public. That means that opportunities will be provided at the opening of the meeting for people to provide input and also if there's a hearing or something of that nature, to provide comment. Otherwise, they're not permitted to involve themselves in meetings. All right, the next item is awards recognition and correspondence. Commissioner Schaefer.
Actually, Chairman Murdock, could we have somebody identify themselves? The ending in 83, the phone number.
That's going to be Karen.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay, so our challenge coin award program, we've actually given several challenge coins out since its implementation, and we've given a few more out in the last couple of weeks. The first one was from Jennifer Blake. The coin recipient is Riley Workman. Last month while working, well, beginning to process payroll, Stephanie began to notice strange errors with her computer. Over the next several days, the pay system became completely unstable to her, or unusable, excuse me, to her. Despite not being an in-house expert in IFAS, Riley jumped into both feet to help. Stephanie sought through the issue. Most importantly, he listened to her when she explained the anomalies that had been happening. He installed, uninstalled, reinstalled countless programs and spent the better part of three days dedicated to making sure she was able to process payroll this month. This gremlin even had him stuffed. In the end, he put a new hard drive into her computer and had her up and running in time to ensure payroll came off without a hitch. As you can imagine, payroll is pretty important around here. The level of customer service Riley brings to the table is unmatched. He is, he always is friendly, understanding, and helpful. He truly is one of our greatest assets. And so that was for Riley Workman. The second one was from Director Mark Royal. The coin recipient is Melville Lee Carter. On July 14th, 2021, I awarded Melville Lee Carter a Yumitilla County Challenge Coin for our demonstrated excellence, loyalty, and tireless work ethic to the people of Yumitilla County. I recently became the interim director of the Yumitilla County Human Services Department. Mel Carter welcomed me and has become someone I can rely on for pertinent information and reliable assistance that I have never, ever experienced in my past government service. Her knowledge regarding budget, personnel statistics, and overall operational know-how has been exemplary. Our department is in a transitional period as we move from a county-operated department to, oh, there it is, to one that is a private nonprofit corporation. As many of you could guess, this requires a lot of coordination and proper attention to detail. Mel is our go-to for everything we do and has been recognized for her commitment to the team at Human Services and also the agency to which we are transferring. Melville Lee Carter is very proud to be an employee of Yumitilla County and can easily get choked up if she speaks about the possibility of leaving someday. Believe me when I say she is a loyal and dedicated employee who respects Yumitilla County and so often shares that they have treated her well. I am proud to recognize Melville Lee Carter with the Yumitilla County Challenge Coin. Thank you for your service to our community. And last but certainly not least, from Kim Lindell and Elections to John and Marie Gard and their recognition for their dedication to the Elections Division. John and Marie Gard have spent a lot of many, many years in the service of Yumitilla County, so that was very well deserved as well. That's all I have.
Okay, I have a couple of additional thank you notes. One is from Danor Farms in Milton Free Water. I received a Yerus grant in support of their efforts to serve the community, and this is the letter of thank you. Also, two requests for extensions. It's not, I don't believe it's an action item, but the Milton Free Water Downtown Alliance requested an extension due to COVID, and the Kiwanis Foundation also requested an extension so that we're aware, and that's a matter of record.
Do we have to take action on that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Chairman Murdock.
The Yerus Board does that, I believe.
Yeah, but I thought we had to do that as well.
Do we counsel?
I'm sorry, I was.
There's two requests in there for extension of the Yerus grants. Do we need, do we need to take action?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Maybe.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll do that with the item nine. Okay, minutes of the meeting of July 21st, 2021.
Before that, Chairman Murdock, can I have a minute for recognitions, at least, real quickly? In fact, it's going to be a hybrid between recognitions and Commissioner comments. I'd like to recognize Yumitilla County Fair Board for the effort that they have put in with some strong headwinds coming into the 2021 Yumitilla County Fair. One of those is kind of a mix between the Health Department and the Yumitilla County Fair with coordination between Joe Biamura and Angie McNally, the fair manager. We are going to be able to have an incentive program for people that get vaccinated during the Yumitilla County Fair and during the Yumitilla County Fair Parade. There will be a vaccination spot at the beginning and the end, and we have an opportunity to receive two $10 food vouchers or a carnival band voucher to ride all the carnival rides all day at the Yumitilla County Fair. Very aggressive incentive program, and hopefully it works out well. Thank you.
I think I'd add to that the fact that I appreciate the fact that we met with the West County mayors and managers, and they were very interested in finding out what was going on with COVID, and the suggestion regarding the carnival armband actually came out of that meeting.
Yeah, it did, Mark.
If we wonder what happens at those meetings, I thought that was a very positive outcome from the meeting. All right, we have before us the minutes of the previous meeting, July 21st, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, additions to the agenda.
None, no, I'm all right.
At the end, I would like to have under Commissioner comments prior to actions that are being requested of us and meetings that were going to be attended. I don't want a position from the county, but I would like to put on the agenda letters that are being presented to us related to the River Democracy Act and also COVID regulations, including masking for students. Okay? All right, Board of Commissioners payable.
The first item is payable coming before the board because of the dollar amount. It relates to COVID vaccination ads that were placed at the request of the Board of Commissioners.
I would move for approval, payment to the EO Media Group in the amount of $7,879.56.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Creation of a position in public health. Joe, are you there, or Jennifer, are you doing this?
Um, we don't need Joe's there.
I am here.
Oh, Joe's here. Okay, thanks, Joe.
Public health director, if you can just say aye. The creation of a position is for the creation of a communications coordinator position that would help us have a stable point of contact for coordinating all of our outward messaging and internal messaging as far as making sure we're adhering to our branding policies, updating our social media, managing our updates, managing our various ad programs and campaigns that are running through radio and other media sources. This position would also function as our accreditation coordinator, which would be a point person helping us internally continue to make strides towards the accreditation process, which we began at the onset of this pandemic, and that progress has unfortunately stalled at this point. The communications for COVID information would be the main focus point of this job, at least at the current point in time, and the current funding for this position is coming from those funds which we received from the states over that purpose.
So not general fund dollars?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the position.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Joe, you have the next item, too. The improvements to the contact tracers for offices.
Yeah, so when we initially put the contact tracing center together, it was a quickly put together hodgepodge of desks, chairs, et cetera, as we all hoped and planned at the time that that was going to be about a three to six month process. Unfortunately, that has not been what has happened, and as we're moving forward, we do not foresee that center going away anytime in the near future as we are transitioning those temporary workers into permanent status. I would like to improve that work environment so that they are actually feel like they are in a permanent environment that they're working in. And so we've got to put in front of you for $32,290.14, which would put in some cubicle walls, matching desks, chairs, et cetera, setting that area up so that the staff feel like they're in a permanent location and improve that work environment for them for the next couple of years.
I would move for approval to spend $32,290.14 to create a major permanent work location for Yumitilla County Health, CD Team, and COVID contact tracers.
Second.
And as you do that, Joe, I hope you would also extend to the contact tracers our appreciation for the work they're doing. It's not easy. It's something we do, I guess, last week on Saturdays as well, but I think they need to understand that a part of the reason these improvements are being made is because we sincerely appreciate what they're doing.
I will definitely pass that along, and I appreciate it.
Actually, Joe, real fast, one of, I got a phone call the other day from somebody who had the quote-unquote "pleasure" of interacting with one of your contact tracers, and it was Rowan, and the person I spoke to spoke very highly of Rowan, said very professional and courteous and answered all of his questions, so.
Excellent. Good to hear.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. The next item is the jail food services contract. We have two guests with us who may be making the presentation. I also see the sheriff on there, so who's going to do that? I'm sensing by lack of movement from you two that it's the sheriff.
Is the sheriff on screen?
Here he is.
Yes.
Yeah.
So yes, we went through this process, a request for proposals to explore some options in our food service for the jail. Through that process, we were able to get four different companies that bid the project. That was, of course, Aramark is our current provider, Summit, another proposal from Davis Entertainment, I think it was, and Trinity Service Group. In our review of all of the proposals and along with doing some follow-up investigation, reaching out to other jails that are currently using either Trinity, Summit, or Aramark, from our estimation, Trinity came out number one. And not only the quality of food that they put out, but also a very robust commissary service that is done off-site and then sent into the jail so we don't have to expend staff time performing those duties inside our facility. And so overwhelmingly, Trinity came out number one, and we would like to award the contract. I believe the Aramark contract is due to expire in September, and so that's where we're at today.
I would move to award contract with jail food service contracts, including commissary, to Trinity Service Group. Would reserve comment?
Second.
I would also, I would also like to provide an opportunity for either Captain Hearn or Lieutenant Franks to add comments if you wish. You have to come up here and do it. Do you want to add anything? You've taken the effort to come.
Captain Hearn, I've talked to a lot of different people that are using the companies. We put it all in a letter, addressed it to uncharted little field that's included in there, so.
The, thank you, thank you very much. This was not a straightforward contract. It was complicated. It had everything from commissary responsibilities to new kitchen equipment, to timeliness of meals, to the calorie count of meals. It took some time to go through all the proposals, and I did that, and I, without, without influence from these guys, Trinity came out ahead of mine, not just for the things that I mentioned, but also because of the treatment of the inmates themselves, who the commissary program is very equitable. It's not a egregious type of percentage that you see at other jails across the state and the country. So I thought that Trinity was very responsive there, but also very responsive in how they correct their problems. If there are issues, they have a communications line for these guys to talk to that wasn't offered in the other proposals. So I truly, just independently from, from the sheriff's office, endorse this and would like to say thank you for going out for such a complete RFP. Again, it wasn't a simple one. It was a complicated RFP, and it was done well, and the number of responders kind of shows you the quality of our sheriffs and our jail in itself. So that's my comment.
I just extend, echo the comments of Captain Hearn. I had an opportunity to look through the emails, both pro and con, and it was a pretty exhaustive study, and I like hearing from other jails in Oregon particularly, who have, who have used the services of the different providers, and so it looks like we've done well. Any other comments?
Nope, I agree with Captain Hearn as well.
Sergeant Schaefer. No other comments?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, dispatch payable.
Good morning, Commissioner. Before you have a bill for Pendleton Electric in the amount of $13,041.88. It was for electrical work done to install our new uninterrupted power supply. It has been replaced since 1999 when the building was put in, so it was long overdue. They had refurbished field units. However, we were looking at cost for batteries. This is much more efficient. It did take a little bit longer, actually quite a bit longer than anticipated. We went into obviously double overtime. I need to extend a thank you to Mark and his crew, Richard hung out there, and also radio data district personnel. It took about 25 to 26 hours total to get the thing installed properly.
Just out of curiosity, how many of those hours were you there?
Um, I'd rather not answer that question. I'd love to pay.
Fair enough. I think I know the answer.
I would move for approval, a payment to Pendleton Electric Company in the amount of $17,041.88.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Community service.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Karen.
Community service van lease.
Mr. Primmer is traveling right now and is unable to attend the meeting. What is being requested is to go out for a used community service van utilizing the Enterprise Fleet Management. There is not at this point an identified vehicle. What is being requested is authorization to spend up to $45,000 to purchase the used vehicle.
My question, Doug, is, is it to purchase it or lease it?
It will be leased.
Lease with the option of purchase, is that right?
Yeah, I think that's what it is. I mean, technically, it's a lease, but in the end, purchasing.
Okay.
I would move approval of that in the amount of $45,000, not to exceed.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Minutes payable.
Morning, Commissioner. Mark Canner, facilities manager. This table is for the Stafford Hansel chiller repairs, replacements and parts that were failing, so that hopefully we can get several more years out of that equipment.
I would move for approval, payment to HMS Commercial Services in the amount of $6,540, because that's probably about $15 per degree of heat that was going on in that building.
Second.
Did you just transfer the heat here, or did you?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what happened.
Actually fix it over there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, thanks, Mark.
All right, department reorganization.
Wait, now me? Is that what it is?
Uh, unless Mark's up.
I don't think I saw Mark up there.
Okay, then I guess it's you.
So I'll do. So with the transfer of alcohol and drug program to community counseling services, has created a need to reorganize departments and also for replacement of the veterans program. The proposal would create a new department separate from Human Services Program to include developmentally disability services and to also include veterinary services. The reorganization would include reclassification of the developmentally disabled supervisor to the director of CDDP slash veterans to the range of 37 to provide oversight over both programs. Funding for the position will be appropriately split across both funds. Human Services Department will be eliminated at oversight for the contract for mental health addictions, treatment, and problem gambling services will remain with finance and legal staff. So the request and action is effective September 1 to reorganize departments to create a department comprised of DDP and veterans and reclass of the current DDP director to CDDP veterans, range 37, with overall responsibility of both programs. And I would make a motion that we do that.
Second, I do have a question. If you eliminate the Developmental Disability Services, does that mean that veterans' fairs eventually will pick up the full cost of this position?
No, no, no. It's just, she's just being eliminated from being the supervisor to DDP. Now she's going to become the director of DDP and veterans.
Okay.
I don't think that answered your question.
That if DDP goes away?
DDP's not going away.
Okay.
So it'll still be here.
Does this reach?
I think the bigger question is if CDDP went away, we would not have a director over veterans.
Oh.
I guess I, I guess I worded that wrong. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
So I don't see CDDP going away. I mean, I guess I'm not.
No, I don't either, but I just, I just want that in the record.
Yeah.
Robert? That was all.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm Robert Paul, CFO. I would just interject that if CDDP for some reason was no longer under the county's purview, we would have a lot of other reorganizing to do, and veterans would probably end up somewhere else. They, they're not a department that's large enough for a director by themselves.
Agreed, yeah.
But would, but would remain underneath the county's purbanos?
Veterans?
Yeah.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I just was anxious to get, following Commissioner Doran's comments, anxious to get into the record that overseeing veterans is not in and of itself a director-level position.
Yeah, no.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, the Yerus community grants, I actually already shared that information with you, that there were two requests to extend their grants. It's brought to my attention. This is an action item, so do you want to discuss it further?
And it's not just an extension, though.
Yeah, there's more to it than that.
All right.
One of them, they're actually requesting to change the purpose of the grant. The one to the Downtown Alliance was $9,650, and they want to spend $2,000 towards that project and take the balance and then use it to purchase a restroom trailer for the Free Water Square.
That was the one for building Free Water.
I do want to point out that that does have full support of the Yerus Board.
Who's on the Yerus Board?
Uh, myself, Jim.
I just want to know who from up here.
Oh, okay.
So you're aware?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay. I also get a little nervous when, when they start changing the grant request after it's been awarded to make sure it's.
Right, yeah, the full committee.
The efficacy of what we've done.
Yeah, the full committee met again and had that discussion, so.
We're going to have another one from another city, too, so.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve grants and adopt order number BCC 2021-067.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is a local community investment project. This is for the Canvas Prairie Event Center, Convention Event Center, in the amount of $37,500. It's part of our ARA Local Community Investment Projects. If you don't mind, I'd like to take the pleasure of making that motion.
Second.
The only comment I have is, I think it's a great event or a great cause, and if you haven't been up there to see the work, it's all ready, then I think you should take the time to do it, and it's nice that it's one of those events that recognizes the commissioners as participants, so I think it's a great, great cause.
Well, I think also it's going to have economic, certainly a positive economic impact and hopefully other impacts on the city of Ukhaya as well. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Foreclosed property payable.
This is coming before the board for approval for a payment because of the dollar amount. In this particular situation, the county foreclosed on a piece of property in the city of Weston, and the city had provided sewer and water services to the property and has filed a lien against it and recorded that in the county records. And a result, that lien is actually superior to the county tax lien, and so the payment for those, that lien will need to come from the proceeds from the sale of the properties. And that's of the request as far as to pay the city of Weston for the $8,508.56.
Mr. Chairman, approval.
Second with questions.
Okay.
The way I understand this, and I shouldn't have talked to Doug ahead of time, but is that all we're doing is facilitating a payment that's going to be made later on, no matter what? If, if the lien, we're not, we're not in a position to stop the sale of the piece of property. This $8,000, whether we pay it or if it's paid at the time of sale, still gets paid to the city of Weston. Is that correct?
Yes, it gets paid to the city.
So all we're doing is speeding up the revenue to the city of Weston.
Well, I mean, yes, but we're paying it from the proceeds from the sales.
Was that dollar amount included in the minimum standard for the foreclosure?
Uh, no, it was not. In this case, it did match it, but it wasn't included.
It did match it, so even if it was included, it would be still a legit sale.
Oh, yeah, it's definitely, yeah. It's just that, the way the section's written, if they record this lien, then after it's sold, then you can pay the lien.
But it's still an encumbered expense ahead of the sale that somebody has to pay?
Right. Yes. I mean, it is against the property.
Okay.
Yes. It goes with the property.
So, and my question, again, I should have done this ahead of time because I had it on my list. My question is, was the sale enough to match the requirement, given if that lien was included in the total dollars?
Yes, because the minimum amount is based on the sale of the amount that was at the auction. And we go down to 15% of that, and it didn't meet that, yes.
Okay. I'm good.
I believe we have a motion, did we not?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, Doug.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right. This is sort of, sort of under the heading of Commissioner's reports, but there's some questions I want to ask of us so that we can discuss them in a public setting. The first, of course, would be that, that there seems to be confusion about masks in Umatonna County. My understanding is that our public health director has recommended that we follow the guidelines set forth by the CDC, the president, and the governor of Oregon, which is that we recommend wearing of masks indoors. Is that universal understanding?
It's a recommendation, not a requirement.
Right. It's a recommendation. Well, we, we stopped short mandate based on consideration of whether or not it could be enforced, how well we could enforce it, but we certainly are recommending it. Is that?
Yes.
You all agree? Okay. The second one is that there's considerable discussion of the River Democracy Act. We're continuing to get letters from other members of the Eastern Oregon Association of Counties about their position on the River Democracy Act. It's somewhat controversial. It impacts different counties in different ways. Commissioner Doran, you have represented us on this. I'm certain it will come up for discussion on Monday at the Eastern Oregon Counties Association. And I just want to make sure I'm aware. We, we have, we, our county's had some concerns because clearly we worked with Senator Wyden in various ways, including our desire to get his support for our water project and our mental health. So I want to make sure I'm on solid ground when I participate in the conversation.
Here's, here's where our discussion has gone. There's been different counties, again, like you mentioned, Chairman, have a lot more impact than Umatonna County. However, Umatonna County does have impact on the Umatonna River, South Fork of the Wall, and Meacham Creek. Again, Meacham Creek in places encompasses some of the same concerns that other counties have, is that Meacham Creek really is not even a creek most of the year. You can step over it, walk over it, and in some places, it's not even distinguishable. So how it fits into a wild and scenic definition is kind of, kind of the thrust of one avenue of questioning. The other is, and I think that Senator Wyden's office is, is working on this. The information we've received back is that they are working on a clear and definitive map, which we don't have at this time, that has been asked for from the other counties also. It is a complex issue. And it, at this point, I think that even if you talk to Senator Wyden, his position is that he's willing to listen, that there's other, other conversations that still need to take place. I don't feel that it's great legislation at this point. I'm not even sure the senator understood, or would, would endorse that it's great legislation at this point, that he is trying to, to make it better and recognize the issues that are out there. But at this point, I, I don't think it's a legislation that this board, that I would recommend that this board endorse at all at this point.
Would you recommend opposing it?
I, I would have a hard time opposing it until we have some further information. I would like to see either myself or all of us sit down with Senator Wyden or his representative, and I think that offer's been made. I wish that we would have followed through with the public meeting. I think that would have been a lot more, a lot more headway would have been made with a full, public, transparent meeting. But I think at this point, I would take any meeting I can get my hand on right now.
I, so are we taking a neutral stance for now? Is that kind of the, just a?
I would say a no stance at all right now.
That's fine. I just, that's what I was asking for, is a matter of record where we are on the issue, which is to continue to participate in the conversation. In my understanding, we'll continue to participate in the conversation. We'll neither endorse nor oppose, but we have deep concerns about the bill in its current form.
And we have already sent a letter to Senator Wyden asking for additional information as a board, and actually with discussions of the local, the local issues, too. So in, in one way, we've taken a stand to stand is we need further information. And, and I think that's recognized by all parties. Now that, now that other states have become involved with the discussion, clarification and definitive answers are going to be necessary for this legislation to move forward.
Okay, that's, we're being asked for comment, and that's sufficient. The other is that EOC, say that right?
Mm-hmm.
I always have to ask because we never quite know where they're going, but they are, are at this time going to discuss the fact that the state has now mandated that masks will be used for the entire 2021-22 school year. And I'm also asking for our thoughts on at what level we would wish to be involved in that conversation.
My, my comments there, as I read Senator Pendley and Representative Mark Owens's letter to the governor, and I, to me personally, that encompassed a lot of my feelings on it, is I, I would like to see the transparency from the governor's office. So if I was going to endorse anything, it would be that letter. It's a fairly neutral letter, only asking for transparency and the local input from the school districts.
I agree. I read the letter as well, and I, I'm on board with that.
I, I have some concerns about, I think actually, local school districts are the ones that need to be in the, in the heart of the conversation, assuming they're representing their parents as well, and that they also need to go through the Oregon School Boards Association and related organizations. I have some personal concerns about a, a directive that would be so all-encompassing as to include the entire 2021-22 school year.
Without an exit plan?
Yeah. I, I'm, I understand right now we're in the midst of a crisis, but a lot can change between now and June.
Well, my concern with that is it's removing a piece of local control that the governor just said she was going to give was local control, and now that's being taken away from our school boards. I think it's a piece that should be at the local level.
I read an interesting article in the Argentinian this morning about the fact that on one hand, they're saying it really, we really want local control and have it in the hands of, of local officials, with the exception of this, 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 and this that have now been imposed since then. So I don't really, don't know whether it's local control or not. The other thing I would say is that I, I also have deep concerns as it is extended to athletics. I, as I sit here wearing a mask, I don't do much running personally, but I can't imagine what it would be like for a teenager to have their flow of oxygen impaired while they're participating aggressively in activities, so.
I, I do participate in trail runs, and, and I tried it with a mask and got about 18, 19 steps. It's, it's impossible. But to, to follow up on that, Chairman Murdock, is the directive, if you read the directive from the governor, it is very confusing when it does come to athletics. And I feel sorry for every athletic director in the state of Oregon right now, because to apply what was written in that to real world, whether it be during recess or whether it's extracurricular activities, are you a club sport or are you a school sanctioned sport? Do you travel on a school bus? Do you travel on a contract bus? There is not clear information out there right now for any of those athletic directors to, to try and put together a solid program.
I do know from kids who have participated in activities that some of them may make a conscious decision not to participate if they have to wear masks.
That's sad.
Based on the discomfort that it provides and the danger to their health, so.
And it, it's just not athletics. If you look at the music, music room, if you look at the thespians, it, it applies to all extracurricular curriculum.
Okay, that will, I, that's, that will help me in the conversation. Anything else, Commissioner Schaefer?
I just want to let everybody know that Congressman Bench is having a town hall on Monday morning at 9:00 AM at the Pendleton Convention Center. So now it's open to the public. Just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, with that, I'm, before we adjourn, I'm going to call for an executive session under ORS 192.6602A, B, and H. And that will be held in room 21. Okay? Anything else?
Are we going to come back here after the 121?
Only if we have to make a decision, right, counsel?
Okay.
We were adjourned.